Welcome, everybody, to Isle Palm City Council. Today is Tuesday, January 28th, 6:00 PM. Thank you all for coming. I'd like to acknowledge that both the press and the public have duly notified of this meeting in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. Please feel free to join me as I say a prayer to be followed by our Pledge of Allegiance and then roll call. Dear wise and loving Father, I thank you on behalf of everyone who has joined us tonight as we enter this new year with a refreshed outlook. I know that we have challenges, but help us all work together in harmony, even when there is honest disagreement. Give us each listening ears, thoughtful words, and a sense of humor. I ask for your guidance in addressing these challenges for the betterment of our island and for our residents, for not only now, but for future generations. I thank you all that you have blessed us with: life itself, our beach, this island paradise we call home. I ask that you look over our families, our employees, our public safety personnel, and military, who are always looking over us and protecting us 24/7/365. I thank you for our freedoms and our freedom of speech. It is in your most blessed name I pray, amen.
Amen. Blessed be the name of the United States of America, and to the people of our land, with the same one nation under God, indivisible, just as it is in the name of justice for all.
Okay. City Clerk Nicole Deneen, roll call, please.
Councilmember Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember Streeman.
Here.
Councilmember Moi.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Cannon.
Here.
Councilmember Vought.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Pound.
Here.
Mayor Carroll.
Here. Thank you. Before we get into the actual, I'm going to have a little infomercial. Please don't forget our community marina visiting workshop being held this Thursday at Direct Center starting at 5:30. This workshop will not be a debate on any particular tenant or operation. We will record participants' responses, plus one can go online to www.iop.net and fill out the response form. No decisions will be made based on Thursday night's forum, but the results along with the online results, plus those from 2018 marina meetings, will all be taken into account with our real property committee and then brought before council. This decision for the future of the marinas is too big for nine council members, but will be one made through every effort to include all of our residents in this transparent way. Lastly, please don't forget, on February 15th, Mount Pleasant Fire Department, I mean, Police Department, in conjunction with the Isle Palms Fire Department's help, because he's challenged us, is a swim for the Special Olympics. This will be the fifth year in a row doing that. Come down, the fun starts at the Windjammer, starting at about 10:30, so please, come. The first order of business is the election of Mayor Protem. Do I hear a motion?
So, you want nominations or...
nominations. Oh, yeah.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to nominate John Moi.
John Moi. Do I have a second?
Do you second the nomination on this?
You don't have to.
Okay. Do I have any other nominations?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to nominate Jimmy Ward.
We have two nominations. Are there any others? We will go into sequence of which they were made. All those in favor of Councilmember John Moi, please signify by saying aye. And raise your arm, please.
Thank you.
Yes, you don't want it.
Okay. All those in favor of Councilman James Ward, raise your right arm and say aye.
Aye. Wait, I got to tell you, I have to leave early.
Okay, can we back up this session?
Would you all raise your hands again, please, for the record?
I do that, please.
Ryan, Mr. President.
All right, well, congratulations.
Yes, please.
Okay. Next order of business is the reading of the journals of previous meetings. We've got a few of them. Regular city council meeting, November 19th, 2019. Special city council meeting, December 3rd, 2019. Special city council meeting, December 10th, 2019. Special city council meeting, January 7th, 2020. And special city council meeting, January 9th, 2020.
Do you like to make a motion to approve all those minutes?
Second. No discussion?
I don't think so.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Citizens' comments. Do we have a sign-up sheet?
We do.
Sorry, coming your way.
Make it your way.
Okay. We're going to do citizens' comments first before we hear from our financial statements. So first up is Ms. Lane Kip.
Hey there.
I come up front and name an address, please.
My good buddy.
Not that we don't know you, but for the record.
All right, for the record. Hey there, my name is Laney McCombs Kip, 3105 Cameron Boulevard, Isle Palms. So first and foremost, I'm an Isle Palms resident, passionate about living here. I have grown up here for basically my whole life, been spending the summers here. Now that my family and I live here, I have the honor of also being the vice president of the East Cooper Swim League. So my comment tonight is around the proposal or the conversation that's happening around the pool. I am a big fan of the pool with the caveat with extensive research and study in making sure we roll it out correctly, that it's financially impactful positively to the members and the residents of this community, and it continues to serve as a way for our families and our community to come together. We currently have nine teams in the East Cooper Swim League. We are one of those. They range from Creekside, Hamlin, Hopkall, Rivertown, Park West, Mount Pleasant Rec. Department, Rivertown Country Club, Brickyard, and Ion. The island, right now, what we're faced with is we work out of Wild Dunes. We cannot have meets at Wild Dunes, and so therefore, we are at jeopardy of losing our East Cooper Swim League membership. So it affects about 125 to 150 children participate from the ages of six to 18. There are scholarships that come out of that for colleges, and it ranges from 70 to 90 families just here on the island that participate annually in that. So it's a very large impact, and if you haven't had the opportunity, if your children haven't had the opportunity to participate, or if you haven't had the opportunity to come to one of our meets, I would encourage you to, because if you saw what happened to the community when all of these families are together and get to know each other, it does nothing more than build the bonds and makes our community stronger. So I strongly recommend and will not volunteer to lead it, but will certainly volunteer to participate in any of the planning that were to take place. Thank you.
Next up, Anna Parsons.
I can't read right. Sorry. I'm Anna Pandey. I live on 5 Loudoun Boulevard, right around the Rec. Department, and I'm here to support the pool as well. I lived here since the '90s, and I've heard of this pool planning since then. I was hoping when the new Rec. Department came out, the pool was going to be part of it. It hasn't happened, so I'm hoping that it can move forward. I think there's going to be maybe an advisory committee. I fully support. As an island resident, also as a pediatrician, we recommend swimming lessons from a very young age, and unfortunately, we don't have that possibility here on the island, so I always had to take my kids across town to do that, and I hope that younger families can have that opportunity, so for health, wellness, and safety of our citizens. After all, we live surrounded by water, so it was always supposed to be short and sweet, so I hope you guys consider it. Thank you for all you do. Sorry for the typos on my email last night.
Thank you, Anna. We're well under 30 minutes. Does anyone else like to have a citizen's comment? Hearing none, moving on. We have a financial audited statement by Representative Chris Kerr of McKay Kitty, and this is the fun part of our evening, where everybody can see where we are financially. That's why I wanted to get my infomercial in early. Thank you.
I am Chris Kerr with McKay Kitty. We performed the audit this past year. For the year ended June 30th, 2019. McKay Kitty, just a little bit about us. We're a local firm. We're in Mount Pleasant, also in West Ashley, with over 30 years of experience. And I'm the audit manager at McKay Kitty, so I help lead the audit. Just a little bit about the audit and kind of the Cliff Notes version. So there's 100 pages in front of city council right now, and so to narrow that down to one quick and dirty page, we tried to put it here for you. The main page that we're looking at is the independent auditor's report that shows basically our report at the end of the day of whether the financial statements are materially accurate or if they're not. And then there's some other schedules, and then the financial statements. The management discussion analysis is a very valuable tool, I think, to the city and anybody reviewing the financial statements. It's just a summary of pretty much the rest of the financial statements, so it takes, like I said, those 100 pages, condenses it down into maybe 10 pages. It's really valuable information. And then you have your basic financial statements. You have government-wide and fund financial statements, and we'll get into that detail a little bit later. Sure, not everybody wants to know everything about this, but you'll get a crash course in government financial statements tonight. And then we also have the required supplementary information, and then compliance. So we look at internal controls while we're at the audit. We just look to make sure the processes are in place, that there's not one person doing every process, and that they could make a mistake, and then you wouldn't see it in the financial statements, or they could, you know, take money or commit fraud, basically. So going to the independent auditor's report, that would be page one of the financial statements in front of you. As I mentioned, we're doing the year ended June 30th, 2019. The purpose of the financial statement was to provide an opinion on the material accuracy of the amounts and disclosures in the financial statements after reviewing audit evidence and performing detailed testing. So what does that mean? Basically, we wanted to make sure that the financial statements were accurate, that when they're presented to the citizens, to city council, to investors, that they're looking at accurate numbers at the end of the day, and within a material amount. So there could be something that's off $1, $200, but in the big picture, in the big scheme of things, that's immaterial when it comes down to small amounts like that. And then the big thing in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects. So basically, we provided a clean opinion, and this is the highest opinion that us as auditors can provide, so that's great for the city, and I think that just kind of shows how your finances are from both the finance team and the cities, that you have good people in place. Moving on to the management discussion analysis. So like I mentioned, there's probably about 10 pages in there. We tried to narrow it down a little bit more and just mention some things here. So assets exceeded liabilities by $30,800, of which $24 million and 6.6 were related to cities governmental and business-type activities. Total revenues of $18.6 million exceeded total revenues or expenses of $14.2, resulting in an increase from prior fiscal year of $4.3 million in the net position. The city's combined ending governmental fund balances were $19 million, and that was an increase of $2.3 million over the prior year, and 2.9 of the total fund balance is available for spending at the city's discretion. Moving on. The capital asset additions during the year were about $3.3 million, and about $1.5 million of this was related to the drainage project from 45th to 52nd. And then some of those additions were offset by regular depreciation expense that you have every year, and that was about 1.4 for the governmental and 133 for the business-type activities. Total debt has decreased by $1 million, a little bit over $1 million, due to the normally scheduled debt payments. And the city's bond rating is at an AA1 from Moody's, so that's very good. Moving on, so this is kind of just high level of what is government-wide versus fund financial statements. So basically, government-wide, you have basically all of the government's operations except for fiduciary-type funds. And then fund financial statements are broken up into different types of funds. You have governmental, proprietary, fiduciary funds. So there's different types of funds that are in there. So for instance, the marina would be in its own separate fund. There's different things, different funds for each category. But this is just kind of a little bit of detail to kind of help you understand the financial a little bit better. And then this is also in the statement or in the management discussion analysis, it's on page seven, and it's just kind of, wanted to go over the statement net position summary analysis. This shows that in 2019, if you look at the very bottom, our net position for 2019 was $24.2 million, whereas in the past, it was $20 million, $20.3 million. So it's quite an increase from the prior year, and that's obviously because of just increases over the prior year and good fiscal management, honestly. The next statement is that we wanted to go over was just the changes in the statement net position, and that's on page eight. So if you look at the change, as I mentioned, it was about $4 million. So at the very bottom here, about right here, probably can't see it from where you're sitting, it's increased $3.8 million, whereas last year, it had only increased about $1.1 million. So that's, you know, almost triple what it was in the prior year. So we have regular communications that we're supposed to provide to those charged with governance. That would be the city council in this case. Basically, what did we encounter behind the scenes that might not go in the financial statements that needs to be brought to your attention? There were no adjustments that we made, so we didn't find any errors that we needed to book adjustments to the financial statements, because ultimately, we usually get to financial statements that have a clean opinion, but sometimes they're messy and we have to make a lot of adjustments to get there. So that just showed that we have a very good, like I mentioned, financial team in place, so kudos to Debbie and her team. And then we had no difficulties encountered during the audit at all. We would have actually presented earlier, but I know there was the, was it the ransomware attack, so that kind of slowed up everything. No disagreements with management, no internal control issues. And then also, we proposed adjustments if they're small at the work paper level, and those are considered immaterial proposed adjustments. We would present those to you as well, if there were any. There was nothing even of that nature. And then myself, Chris Kerr, with the audit team, and then Justin couldn't be here tonight, he had family matters. But I just wanted to open up the questions, if anybody has anything tonight.
Anyone, questions? Twice? Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
If it's good to be in that good a position, I thank our team. Okay, moving on. First reports from the Standing Committee, Ways and Means. Mayor Protem has got to go. It's all right. Yes, sir.
All right. So we met last Tuesday, the 21st, at 5:00. First item of business was election of chair, which I am. Councilmember Ward is vice chair. We went through the financial statements with Debbie, and there was a page in the back for the residents, a one pager, front and back. Council, I don't know if you've got it, you've seen all these numbers, but just trying to, there's so many numbers flying around through the audit tonight, and just stood me just standing up here and spewing numbers, I thought it might be helpful to have something in front of you to see. So I've highlighted the actual revenues year-to-date. So again, we're on a June-to-June fiscal year, so we're halfway through. So receipts of just under $6.8 million, or revenues of just under $6.8 million for the six months. You can see expenditures to the right there, just over $5.9 or just under $6, so pretty good first six months. Just below that, you'll see highlighted the year-to-date general fund revenues, just to give you a feel for where our money's coming from, and general fund expenditures, to give you some feel for where our money's going. So year-over-year, or not year-over-year, but for the first six months, general fund revenues are up about 22%, rough numbers. Tourism's up about 2% from the prior year, and you can see that if you go to the back page, you can see some trended information from 2014 to 2020 fiscal year. And over to the far right bottom, all those ups and downs average out to about 2% increase year-over-year. So all in all, pretty decent. This is not on the page, but just to give you some frame of reference, the fund balances that we're carrying, the cash on hand that we have right now is about $20 million, rough numbers. About $5.5 million set aside for capital projects, about $2.5 million for disaster recovery, and then about a little over $3 million for beach re-nourishment. So again, pretty decent spot with where we sit right now. A lot of challenges sit in front of us, as most of you know, that we'll talk about in the future months. We had three items of new business that we will talk about in a moment and take action on. Also discuss the fiscal year 21 budget calendar. Hard to believe it's already time to start dealing with the next year's budget, but we'll kick that off here next month. Had a pretty good discussion around consideration that any commercial tenant occupying any real property of the city adhere to a competitive bid procurement method. Current ordinance has a "may" in there, that we may put things out for RFP, and we had some conversation about removing that word, and I know we're looking for some additional follow-up from our attorney before we may take action on that. Next meeting of Ways and Means is on Tuesday, February 18th, at 5:00. And then Mayor, you want to run through these three action items?
Yes, sir. I think we have some action.
Yep. So first one is consideration of approval of sole-source contract to Safe Fleet Mobile Vision in the amount of $30,994.27 for the replacement of six in-car camera systems.
So moved. Second. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. I'd just like to make a comment for the record, that after coming off on the heels of the potential ordinance change of removing the bidding procurement process, the sole-source awarding of this contract is due to the fact that there are compatibility issues with other manufacturers, and so the police need this particular manufacturer so that the cameras are compatible with the equipment we are using.
Chief, is there anything you want to add to that?
Yes, sir.
Well said. Thank you. Okay. I have a motion, I have a second, and we have discussion. Any other? Hearing none? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Unanimous?
Second item is consideration of approval of a contract to Bo Hicket Construction in the amount of $64,136 for a diesel generator and transfer switch for the Public Works Workshop. And again, Donny, I'll say this, maybe it's right, it's not to keep the lights on over there, it's really for the pump stations.
Do I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just for the record, we did go out for RFP, received four proposals, and this is the lowest bid in the one with the specs that the Public Works staff is recommending for approval.
Thank you very much. Hearing no other. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Unanimous?
Last item is approval of submitting the following projects as priorities for funding from the Transportation Sales Tax Program. Number one, the improvements to the Waterway Boulevard multi-use path. And second, resurfacing Ocean Boulevard between 10th and 14th.
Do a motion? So moved. Second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? Yes, ma'am.
I just would like to say, in anticipation that this passes, that we are hoping that the community will assist us in sending emails to our city administrator in support of these projects. I know that there is a lot of interest for repaving the multi-use path from 21st to 41st, and so we need your help, community, to make that case to the county.
Thank you. And just to give everybody in the audience an example, we are now putting a path for pedestrians and cyclists coming off the connector onto Isle Palms and to the Ollahan Berry Park. And as it stands now, when the cyclists and bicyclists, pedestrians come down, there's nowhere for them to go. So we're making it safer for us to come off the bridge. This is the money we're using it for, just to give you an explanation. Help us. Yes, sir.
Just, there was a lot of conversation on this, and we're trying to get, if we can't get the whole thing, which is unlikely from the county, is to do this in phases. And to my councilmembers who advocated for this next to me, help with the county would be greatly appreciated. These are county dollars coming towards us that we'll have to look at, you know, potential city of Isle Palms contributions for, and we've been pushing for this now, for this is the third year that we've pushed pretty hard. Well, Brian probably pushed 10 years ago, but this is a key project for the city, and hopefully, we can get some county support for it and get this through this time.
It's overdue.
Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Ayes have it, unanimous again. Thank you.
That's it for Ways and Means.
And the next meeting date?
Next meeting date is February 18th at 5:00.
6:00. We're moving into 6:00. Yes. That was a request.
Yes, it was.
So noted. Okay, moving on. Public Safety.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Safety Committee met 9:00 Monday, January 13th. All committee members were present. I was an elected chair, and Councilman Ward was elected vice chair. Under citizens' comments, Pastor Phil Clark of St. Mark's Lutheran Church came before the committee seeking for a waiver from the noise ordinance for a 21-gun salute performed to honor the first responders and veterans. It's an annual event, and we'll bring it up at our next meeting, because it was not on the agenda. Under old business, we had a consideration of ordinance 2019 to 2016 ordinance to establish new standards for dilapidated structures. We took action on that. It is on the agenda tonight for second reading. We did have an update on implementation of approved changes to the beach parking plan. There have been some changes that are made to our parking plan. Those include extending parallel parking only in parking four foot off the pavement on Palm Boulevard between 41st and 53rd Avenue. And the parallel parking now is on the avenues between 1st and 9th Avenue up that connect Ocean Boulevard. We're having a difficult times with people pulling straight in and encroaching on people's rights on private property, and the parallel parking is a safer way to do it. We had an update, we had a request to SC DOT to conduct a speed study between the post office and 21st Avenue. They conducted a speed study on probably one of the slowest days that we have out here with no traffic, and determined that the lowering the speed limit between those areas between 10th and 21st is not necessary. So we're going to reach out to them again, have them come out maybe Memorial Day and reevaluate their consideration. So we did have an update on our safety camera that we're looking at to install and Breach Inlet Technology Solutions is the vendor who'll be doing that, and this project is in their queue to do it. There's not an exact start date as of yet. The company's making some recommendations for some changes to save the city some money, as well as trying to make it easier for viewing for both the Police Department and the Fire Department from their stations. We had an update on our True Good sample. We were, there's a company out there that has a, it's called True Good. It is a soil, basically right-of-way stabilization project that we're looking at doing. We were having a hard time getting some of the vendors, getting some bids for it, and it's been challenging, but because it's such a small project, but we're still working towards that. That whole project may change soon here anyhow. We had an update on the purchase of our 75-foot ladder truck and the refurbishment of our 95-foot ladder truck. The refurbishment of our 95-foot ladder truck, it's expected to be in service at the end of February or early March. And the 75-foot ladder truck is estimated to be completed by June of this year, so we'll have both those trucks in service for the season. Under new business, we had a review of our Police and Fire Department's 10-year capital plan and discussion of new initiatives and projects for consideration. The administrator distributed copies of the 10-year plan to the members and for the Police and Fire Departments, and she asked the members to review it for further discussion at our next meeting. We had consideration of the sole-source contract that we just voted on, and we did have the highlights to departmental reports under the Fire Department. The activities at the Fire Department included a structure fire with, on the island, and they also participated in the honor guard for the Pearl Harbor Memorial Day at the front beach. There were 61 calls for service in December. As for the Police Department, they had several community meetings in November and December, and will present a full packet to the committee, and will present the rest of council at the next meeting. There was reported 1,100 calls for the service in December, bringing the total number of calls for the Police Department to 30,874 calls for the year. The meeting adjourned at 9:31 AM, and the next meeting is February 3rd at 9:00.
Great report. Any questions? Hearing none, moving on. Public Works.
Public Works, this one may be a little lengthy, because we had a nice, long meeting, but it's all good stuff. We met on Thursday, the 16th, at 8:00. Everybody was present. Election of Chair was myself, Councilmember Streeman as vice chair. First, we had no citizens' comments. First were departmental reports from our director and our assistant director, and I will just say upfront, I will not do justice what these guys have pulled off in the last couple of months. I mean, just really incredible work. It was my first Public Works meeting, obviously, and my question was, is this normal? Because there was a ton of work around drainage on Palm, on Frank Satilli, 29th, 30th, just a number of places where in November, December, Donny, the amount of work you guys did is really phenomenal. Thank you very much for what's happened there. A lot of good coordination of work with SC DOT around some drainage and ditch cleaning that's been happening and will continue for the rest of this month. So I think that's about it on that. Update on Phase 3 drainage and other small internal projects that we've had some conversation about. Good progress with regard to Phase 3 drainage. Douglas, correct me if I'm wrong on anything. Thomas Sedutton is about done doing their design work. Next, we'll kick off into permitting and such, which will take a while. We did have some good news from the OCRM that the amount of mitigation required on behalf of the city is less than first predicted by them, so that was good news on our part. Douglas, anything you want to add on the Phase 3?
No.
Is that all right? At the same time, a lot of the smaller projects are going on that will not require OCRM permitting, but will require Department of Transportation permitting. So we're trying to keep all that going in conjunction at the same time, and Crowe's doing a good job of managing all those projects. We've got some additional work to do based on some OCRM feedback. We're going to need to go across the Wild Dunes Golf Course again with some drainage, that's some additional. Once the design works back, we'll have some follow-up conversations around, with the Wild Dunes folks around that. Update on IOP Connector. Mayor spoke to this just a moment ago. If you've been there, you've certainly noticed the work that has started there. You can, Donnie, you can see your hole man in a big way. So a lot of work happened in a very short timeframe. This is the funded project that the mayor referenced earlier. It's to help redirect pedestrian and bicycle traffic away from vehicular traffic coming off the connector. Contract will complete point of concrete this week, weather permitting, hopefully. The portion of the pathway that intersects the park will be of pervious material and will be completed after the concrete is poured. Company, city has a pressure washing company lined up to clean the side of the Public Works Building once the concrete is taken care of, clear the vines and overgrown brush from the building. Palm trees will be planted by the side of the building to help soften and screen the building. City will also replace the chain link fence that separates Public Works with a wooden fence like it is on the Palm Boulevard side of the house. City will work with the ladies of the Garden Club on the landscaping design and park improvements once the path is complete. We want to make sure that they are involved in the process to honor and protect Leola's and the Garden Club's legacy on the island. On iop.net, under latest news, there is a drawing of the path, so you can go there if you need more information on that project. But again, a lot of progress in some pretty short order. Anything? We had an update on the drainage project at Ocean Boulevard between First and Third. City is expected to pay about $25,000 for that particular project, rest will be county FEMA funds. Just had an update on the multi-use path on Waterway. We're going to talk about additional funding requests that we'll have, again, for that particular project. Councilman Bell's comment, whether it be in phases or in total, hopefully, but we'll go for that again. There's money in fiscal year '21 budget for that, depending on what we get from a grant We discussed in new business consideration of renewing the beach garbage collection contract with JLG Enterprise. The trial period was up December of '19, and the five-year renewal option needs to be exercised or noticed by September 2020, so we've started that process early. Just a quick side note, Director Pitts in his 15 years, first time he's had positive feedback on garbage collection on the beach, once we switched to this new company, so I think so far, so good. Next item, we've already talked about, the consideration of priorities to go towards the Transportation Sales Tax Program. We've hit on that. We had a pretty good discussion around discussion of solar trash compacting stations for our downtown area, and our director and assistant director of Public Works will continue to do some research and look at alternatives there, other types of enclosures that would be more aesthetically pleasing. We reviewed the Public Works Department 10-year capital plan. Our next meeting is Thursday, the 26th. Also, a time change on this one, it's typically at 8:00. This one on the 6th is going to be at 5:00.
Great report. Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Just a suggestion, maybe the committee could look into maybe painting the Public Works Building, maybe like a nice Kelly green or Charleston green, maybe to soften it a little bit. And it wouldn't hurt to throw back the bamboo, too. Just this suggestion.
We are getting estimates for a painting.
Maybe we'll have a council workday.
Camouflage.
That was one of the questions I was going to, statements I was going to bring up, not only in taking it one step further, is I know I brought it up to the administration previously, is it would be neat to have either some type of community work or something, to have like a mural painted on the side of that building, something that was representative of the city, similar to our postcards that we've had in the past. So when you're coming out to the island, it says Isle of Palms welcoming, and some of those historic postcards that we've had, maybe from the...
Classic one, yeah.
Yes, one of those ones, that always looked nice. And also, I know we have an RFP out for grant writing right now, and I would still encourage us to go through, when we're able to get that, and look at what grants are available for that multi-use path on Waterway, to make it more ADA compliant as well.
I have one question. I actually learned last week from Director Pitts that our ditches in Isle of Palms, SC DOT, they were designed really just for our roads. They weren't designed for the drainage of our residential houses. That's something that we've really got to keep in mind, that, you know, they are trying to keep the water off the road, and that's it. So, you know, drainage is huge. This kind of say-laid, focused on that, but...
Good point.
Great report. Thank you so much. Anything else? Hearing none. Moving on. Recreation.
The Recreation Committee met at Monday, January 13th with our, all members present, councilmembers Moy, our new member, Popson, and myself, along with our city administrator, assistant administrator, and assistant recreation director, Farrell. I was elected chair, and councilmember Popson was elected vice chair. Assistant director Farrell gave a great report on all that we have going on, all the wonderful things that we have going on at the Recreation Department. There's lots of new opportunities, so it encourages people to either look online or grab a copy of the guide that they put out every quarter, every, how often does that come out?
Every three.
Every three months? Every quarter? Big change that is, quarterly. Big change that is coming up is registration for our summer day camps. We have, in the past, had what resulted in, for some people, is a overnight campout to, because our summer camp is so popular and such a great deal. But while that was sentimental for some people, other people did not enjoy that. And so we're moving to a online system. The registration dates will be March 2nd through 13th, so not very far from now, but that will help, I'm sure, some families with advanced planning. And so we will be trying to get that word out. Please share that with families so that they know about that upcoming registration.
They can still camp out, I'll tell you.
If they really want to, they can still camp out. No, actually, that's not encouraged, but, all right. We also looked at the results of an RFP for surfing lesson franchise agreement and voted to ask, to submit, to reject the two submitted proposals and submit another RFP that would allow for a ratio of one instructor per four students. And will be, this is something that I know a lot of families want, and we're hopeful that we can come up with something we feel confident in presenting to the rest of the In addition, we had a very lengthy discussion about adding a community swimming pool at the rec center, I would say, also overdue, and looked at a timeline for trying to have an advisory referendum in November of this year, which we, the thinking from our discussions last year is that would be very good timing to get input from a wide section of the community since we would expect with the presidential election, a high turnout. So interesting pieces of our conversation. Our administrator had brought some rough cost, rough cost estimates for a six-lane 25-yard pool, which would be, if it was an indoor pool, a starting point of $415,000. For an outdoor pool...
So for an outdoor pool...
I'm sorry, for an outdoor pool. $415,000 for an outdoor pool, and for an indoor pool, $4.5 million. So a big difference there. Those estimates do not include the cost for the additional spaces, I think, for like things like fence or bathrooms, that would be extra bathrooms that would likely be needed and changing areas, so that $415,000 and $4.5 million is something of a starting point. But I think was very interesting, and we definitely want to go into this with eyes wide open on costs, and not just for, not just for the initial construction, but for the ongoing costs that it would incur in terms of operating. So we got a really good start on that, and we have talked about having a citizens advisory board helping us get input from our community about the many questions that would be involved with the pool, indoor/outdoor being one of the first ones that we would likely tackle. But there's a lot of other things that we would want to look at, including the shape of the pool, what we would want it to be geared towards. I think there's a feeling that in addition to it potentially being an Olympic-sized pool that could host our swim meets, we would also want to provide a space where younger kids would have a shallow end to be able to play, and older citizens and anybody else who wants to do aqua size could do that as well. So all sorts of exciting possibilities that we can consider with a pool. And we have a recommendation that we have a, start creating a citizens advisory board that we need to present to you all tonight. Should we go ahead and do that?
Sure. If there's discussion...
How about a motion for a discussion?
Motion to, well...
Not necessarily a motion to discuss.
Okay. A motion to go forward. Do I hear a motion?
You could discuss the report, the conversation about the report about the pool prior to you all taking action on the recommendation to create a citizens advisory board.
So do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve a citizens advisory board for the sake of collecting input from the community on the pool.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. Now discussion. Yes, sir.
Thank you, councilmember Smith, both for continuing to push for this and the leadership you've taken on this item. Obviously, we've, all of our citizen comments tonight were related to this, and there's a lot of folks on the island who would really like a pool. We know that there's some really hard facts about finances when it comes to the pool, and so as councilmember Smith said, we want to go in with eyes wide open as it relates to what would it cost not only to build it, but to continue operating it. What our committee is trying to do, from our Recreation Committee, is not say, hey, we want to build a pool, but rather put together a very thoughtful, intentional, and well-crafted referendum, as an advisory referendum, which is different than a, what's that, a geo-bank referendum?
Yeah, look at that.
A funding-based referendum. So this referendum wouldn't be, are we building a pool or not, but rather getting a really solid pulse from the community as to what does the island community at large really want to do as it relates to prioritizing our spending. So that's what we're pushing for, is really, it's an advisory, again, that's the official term for it, advisory referendum. And leading up to that, we want to do the due diligence to make sure the community is educated about what we're doing, and that we're asking the questions in the right way so that people can make informed decisions, and so that it's not, oh, yes, I want a pool, so I'm going to raise my hand, because everybody wants a pool, and everybody wants a Ferrari, and we all want these really nice things, but they all come with opportunity costs. And so we want a very educated referendum. Sorry, I'm repeating myself. The point is, we think that a citizens advisory board, because we have so many community members, it's evidenced here today, and as evidenced by emails that are piling up in our inboxes, who are very interested and invested in having the swimming pool. We'd like to get their assistance in helping us craft the language that will go into the referendum and get information that will help the rest of the community be informed. So that's what we're asking for tonight, is just the approval for that citizens advisory board to get us to the referendum in November. And just, the timelines here are very aggressive. To have a referendum on the ballot, we have to have the language nailed down by August to give that to the voter board. So we really don't have a lot of time to do all of the due diligence that we need to do.
Yes, sir.
Lots of questions. I'm a little confused on the referendum case. Having a citizens advisory board, I'm not confused on, right? That's collecting information and input from the citizens. It just seems to me, there are so many questions as we go into a budget session, that trying to squeeze something that's a vote, I presume the outcome of a vote would be binding, not binding. Okay. Good point of clarity. And I have just fundamental geography questions. We've got 1,400 septic tanks and a huge drainage problem in the middle of the island, so I just struggle with the concept of putting an in-ground pool anywhere in that land from a pure environmental reason, right? I think a citizens advisory committee to explore all of those issues, but separating it from a referendum. For me, I look at it as the responsibility of the Recreation Committee to find all these things out, come back to council with the answers without necessarily having to go to referendum. And if that committee chooses to pursue that work, they should have at it. I mean, it's good work on behalf of the citizens, we're better informed. But separate it from budget issues. We've got massive, massive projects in front of us that, you know, $6 million more probably, short-term and drainage projects, $6 million on the public safety building, and I just struggle with binding all these things together in a very short timeframe and hoping to come to a conclusion by November. I mean, we don't have a budget until...
May.
May.
That is our goal.
Right, yeah, so...
If I may?
Yeah, sure.
So I think that we're, in getting an advisory recommendation from the community on this does not mean that we would expect an immediate turnaround for the following budget year of building, necessarily. There are a lot of things that we need to work through. Certainly, we need to look at potential environmental impact and wouldn't want to, if there were serious concerns around that, I think that would probably shape our conversation in a lot of ways, so. So again, I mean, take to heart that you think that perhaps we don't need a referendum. I think this is just a request for a first step of a citizens advisory board, and that could potentially lead us to, with that, with their direction, you know?
We're not here to ask you for a referendum just yet. We're just asking for a citizens advisory.
As proposed, though, we should separate, correct?
Yeah, I think that the recommendation at this point is just to create, well, actually the motion was to have a referendum in November. One of the couple of things that I wanted to just mention, you know, to the group, during the discussion at the committee level, there was some hesitation about approving or authorizing the use of funds towards some of these questions that I think are important to be answered prior to a referendum question. If the will of the group is not to expend or authorize the use of any of those funds, the question that could be presented to the community will be somewhat vague. We won't have a lot of it, we won't be able to have any visuals or a concrete plan of what the pool would look like. Therefore, the referendum question could be advisory, should the city pursue the construction or the design of a pool that's estimated at X that would cost X number of dollars to operate annually? But unfortunately, if we don't have a plan, I mean, if you think about the Marina referendum, we had, you know, a long process, and we hired some consultants who helped devise a plan that was presented to the community. That would not be the case with this referendum question unless we go at it the same process. So that's, I guess, when councilmember Moy was talking about an aggressive timeline, it is such, you know, it is an aggressive timeline for November. I just want to make sure that folks understand and have clear expectations of what the city would have to present to the community by November. We could have estimates, we could have some conceptual ideas of what it would look like, what it would take hiring an architect, a design firm, to really narrow it down of what is viable for the community for that site as well.
From next year's budget dollars, in essence, I mean.
I mean, there are no funds budgeted in FY '20, so there would be an opportunity to budget funds towards that, but those funds become available starting in July.
I understand, but we're presupposing that we will come through a budget session with funds available to do this.
Sure.
Other questions?
Well, yeah, whoever. Who's first?
Go ahead.
Ken.
Sorry.
Go ahead. Again, I think it was trying to get this advisory up and running to take the temperature before we spend any kind of money, especially with the sensitive nature of all the other things we have going on with the drainage and the Marina and so forth. So, it was kind of just trying to get the temperature of the residents to, do we move this thing forward? Into spending money for engineering or conceptuals or whatever. Right.
My question would be, how many people will we set on the advisory board? Who chooses those people? Will there be any type of council person available? Because it'll be one, because more than that would be quorum. How are those decisions going to be impacted? I mean, who makes those?
I have some recommendations. First of all, the, obviously, one of the things that you all would need to consider when approving and authorizing the provision of the citizen advisory board is the number of members. Our recommendation is keep it less than 10, 7 and 10. Anything else, anything over that becomes unmanageable. You'd have, you really need to have people that are committed and will push these things through, through, you know, the next following months. We also recommend that the membership be confirmed and have residents who are voting members of the Alapalms, that could be a criteria that would be required of members. We have talked internally about the makeup composition of the advisory board and that's something that we could share with the committee as the elections are being made. But basically, you would, once authorized by council, we would put an advertisement out saying that the citizen advisory board has been created for this particular task and those residents that are interested in participating could submit a letter of intent indicating why they think that they would be a good addition or how they would bring value to the group and the task and what their qualifications would be. If we have over 10 or over the number set, the set number of available participants, it would be up to the county, to the committee to make those selections. But it wouldn't be, you know, an application process like it is for the planning commission, which is somewhat thorough. It would be more of a letter of intent by those interested in participating.
Yeah, I raised my hand and Ryan, he channeled my thoughts. That's the question I was going to ask and you clarified it to a great degree. I was concerned about the makeup of the potential advisory committee, where that would come from, how it would be composed. Obviously, if you just open the door and say, okay, we're going to have an advisory committee, you could end up with just everybody, everybody on the committee that's just positive about the pool, with no dissenting opinions or other thoughts in regards to that. So, we need to have a lot of thought put into how that advisory committee is put together, in my opinion.
Yes, sir.
No, just...
John hasn't, go ahead, John.
Go ahead, John.
Second time.
Does it happen?
This is just a point that, in the personnel committee, and I don't mean to talk about personnel committee during this debate, but we've had a lot of things...
You're not on agenda today.
We've had a lot of discussions about involving our community because we've had so many highly qualified, incredibly experienced, amazingly intelligent people reach out to us and say, we want to get involved, we want to help. What can we do? And the point of this is not because we want to have a citizen advisory board just for the sake of doing it, but I do see this as a way for us to start flexing that muscle and building that muscle and so that we can do that in more ways when people reach out to us and say, hey, I want to help with something, I want to help with more events at, you know, whatever, that we have at least some established processes and protocols as a council and as a city staff that we can channel those of this folks coming in. So, I think this is a good first step. In committee, we discussed all of those details that Desiree just presented, as well as making sure that this was a very tightly defined goal that we had for the citizen advisory board, that it wasn't just, oh, you're going to get together and talk about the pool. They had a very specific goal, which is they're going to help collect feedback from the rest of the community. And that is the goal of this citizen advisory board, is not to tell us, what do you think it should be, what do you care about, what do you want? It's rather, we need your help to get the pulse of the community.
Okay.
And I'm always the pragmatist. I'm just, I'm way in favor of a citizens advisory board for many things. You're not going to have one seated before March in all likelihood with a budget that's got to be finalized in May, right? So, you've got a citizens advisory board making decisions on fiscal issues in a 60-day timeframe. I just think you really need to separate and recognize that this is not a fiscal '21 issue, this is a fiscal '22 issue and take the right amount of time to think it through, get the right amount of input and put a timeline together that works and then decide whether it worked. Because we can't make significant fiscal decisions by May with this as a parallel activity butting right up against it. Sorry for the pragmatism.
Okay. So, you had two, Susan, have you spoken twice or?
Maybe.
Twice, but who's counting?
Well, just to answer...
Just want to try to keep us going here.
Right, just to answer, I think that we're not trying to lock in budget issues through this. We're, and maybe the motions, the language of the motion maybe should be adjusted to either eliminate the referendum piece or to say, to discuss, for the citizens advisory board to discuss the potential for a referendum in 2020 rather than, I don't, if there's concern that your vote is in favor of a referendum, I think that's problematic. So, I would, have we, do we have a motion?
We have a motion, we have a discussion.
Okay. So, I would make a motion to amend the original motion, which I'm not sure what it exactly says.
So, the motion was to create a citizen advisory board for a community swimming pool referendum question in November of 2020.
So, I would change that language to have a citizens advisory board that will help garner citizens' input on a swimming pool at the rec center and the potential for a referendum, related referendum in November 2020.
So, does anything changed from before?
Well, the, it's not locking you into a referendum, but if there's...
It kind of sounds the same.
Okay. Well, that was really too...
How about you can see, just leave it.
Would you like to?
Yeah, I'll take a step.
Go ahead.
I'd like to move to amend the original motion to remove the language around the referendum.
That's good.
Okay.
All right, so considering, the original motion that you all will be voting on, the amended motion would be consideration of the creation of a citizen advisory board for a community swimming pool at the rec.
So, we have amendment to the original motion.
It's been seconded.
It's been seconded. I think we've discussed, well, I'd like to put one more thing before discussing. We have some big things ahead of us. Councilmember Bill had it right on, nail on the head. We've got a $3.9 million, three, phase three drainage. It says three outfalls. It's unfunded. We have a Marina dock rebuilding that's going to be several million dollars, that's unfunded. So, we've got to be really careful on what we do. I'm all in favor of an advisory board, but at the same time, I think this is way too aggressive for this year with what we're challenged with coming forward. So, you know, I do like the concept of people getting involved, I like your idea of getting people who want to serve the city to help us with this, because we've got a lot of great people in our citizens who are very qualified. So, again, we have to be careful with our pennies because we don't have a lot of pennies. Even though it sounds good, it's pretty tight. Yes, sir.
So, to that comment, Mayor, I'm meeting with staff on Friday to start the budget process and kind of what we're going to do and how we're going to do it. I think one thing that would be helpful for everybody on this stage and everybody in this room is we'll put together that list of what we know are needs, not requirements, but needs, whether it's drainage or Marina or pool or whatever it is, just so we can have our eye on the total ball, you know, and not look at how we need to spend $1, but how we need to spend all 10 of them and where we need to place our bets to some extent. So, that'd be one of the things we'll take away to come up with is here are the known projects that sit in front of us, ones that are either underway with studies and designs and such, or others that are on a wish list that may be infrastructure-type related. So, that'll be one of the things we'll pull together as a reason.
Quick line, for those that don't follow, we are well underway on the permitting for the docks at the Marina, right? And we are under legal obligation to make sure that we put those beyond the state of disrepair.
Okay. So, we have a motion on the table for a citizens advisory board exclusive of being on...
Vote on the amendment.
An amendment. All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, back to the original motion. Would you please reread it for us now? It changes as we all hear.
The motion as amended is to, the creation of a citizen advisory board for a community swimming pool at the rec center to look into the, get, gather feedback from the community about the potential and the viability of having a pool at the recreation center.
Perfect. Thank you so much. All of those in favor?
I'd like to discuss, can I?
We already had discussions.
And we've talked several times.
Where we talked, okay.
I think it's, go ahead. That's who I am, go ahead.
Okay. Just, first of all, just to address the timetable, we're talking about an advisory board for a potential referendum that will happen at the end of this fall. So, we're not locking, it has, really has nothing to do with the current budget that we're putting together and it doesn't necessarily have to have an immediate impact afterward because this is an advisory referendum. There will always be a reason, an issue, a funding liability that will, people can latch on to to say, we shouldn't have a swimming pool on the island. I think, you know, if we're talking about an indoor pool, we're actually talking about a potential baseline cost of a half a million dollars. It will obviously be more than that, but in comparison to these other projects, it's somewhat small, even though it all adds up. I just want to say, you know, that there are valid reasons for adding a pool to the rec center. It is something that many people have wanted for a very long time and it will provide a recreational resource and gathering place for our community. We are at a stage where we have the potential of losing the swim, our swim team, which is not just the Wild Dune swim team, but our island swim team. And they're at a point where the future of their existence is in question because of the nature of their relationship with the resort and their changing opportunities there. And there's so many other reasons. This could be a really good piece of our community that we need to take seriously and find a way, find a will to offer what is something that is considered an expectation in almost any other neighborhood of any size in our, in our area. So, that's all I have to say about it.
Okay, so, the motion on the table is for a advisory board. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays, ayes have it for advisory board.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we need...
Is the rest of the agenda, I mean, do you have anything else?
Oh, that's great.
We can pre-report.
Hold on. Yeah, all right, yeah, the rest of our meeting.
Teamwork.
That was, that was pretty much it. We looked at the 10-year capital plan for the rec department and we set a date for the next meeting, although that may change, so we'll update on the community calendar. That was about it.
Okay.
Here ends my report. Thank you.
Great report. Any questions besides the sum of all?
Mr. Mayor, at this time, I'd like to move that we amend the agenda to allow the personnel committee chair to give the report of their meeting, please.
Second. We might discuss that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Moy.
Man, you're going to regret that. All right.
Not to exceed three minutes.
Personnel committee met on Tuesday, January 14th at 4:30 in City Hall Conference Room. All members were present and staff. I was elected chair and Councilmember Streetman was voted vice chair. No citizen comments, no old business. We got straight into new business with the filling the vacancy on the planning commission. The election of our new council member, Pounds, created a vacancy on the planning commission and, if you recall, the aforementioned high-quality citizenry we have that I spoke of earlier, we've got a lot of people that would like to be on the planning commission. And so, we had 12 applicants to consider and city staff promised to scour some of the older applications to see if there are actually additional applicants that we want to consider as well. And we established a process and committee for going from 12, possibly more, down to one recommendation to make to this council. The personnel committee will evaluate those 12 candidates and we will, based on resumes and qualifications and input that we received from the planning commission itself, on what they think will make the vacancy most successful. We're going to submit our top candidates in rank order to city staff. We'll put together a list of the top three to six and then schedule interviews with those candidates and make our recommendations based on the structured interview process as we have with other vacancies that we have made. And from there, we will make a recommendation to this council. Our next item was the review of the 10-year capital plan and nothing really incredibly material or significant from that, but we'll get into more of that during the budgeting process. And the personnel committee will meet at an abnormal time in February, 9:00 AM on Wednesday, February the 12th. And so, so ends my report.
Great report. Any questions for personnel? Hear none, moving on. Real property.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The real property committee met Wednesday, January 15th at 5:00 PM. All committee members were present. I was nominated chair, Member Popsen is nominated vice chair. Under citizens comments, head Pat C. Hinneman from, had talked about the process for the Marina and the need for transparency and we kind of guided her in where she can go to help find a lot of the information on the website. Nancy Townsend spoke in favor of water sports at the Marina, as well as Suzie Kopp, Marina Townsend, and then Michael Fenn spoke and thanked the committee for changing the time to 5:00 PM. We had an update on the permitting for the Marina docks and docks currently leased to Titleway Water Sports. The administrator gave an in-depth background and history on where we were, where the permits were at, how they were applied for, the Army Corps, through, and where we're at now and what permits we have in our hand and all that is in your report. And it was very in-depth and detailed and that's, it's a good read. We had an update on the Marina restaurant proposal. They are, that group, Bushnell and Lorenz family, is in their 90-day due diligence. In addition to evaluating the construction scenarios, they have also been conducting , as we mentioned, by meeting with the building and planning and zoning director and inspector and about the options available for rehabilitating the building. We had an update on the Green Belt project application and ADA compliance beach walkover and observation deck at 42nd Avenue. Application for this project is in progress and will be submitted prior to the January 31st deadline. The ministry noted that it is a long approval process and approved the project will appear in the next year's budget, FY '22. We had an update on the public safety building rehabilitation project and if you guys haven't noticed, there's new housing in the parking lot out there for our personnel. Res, reported the contract for the 12-month mobile office for the police department has been executed and they are expected to arrive in early February. Staff has developed a relocation plan and will mobilize prior to the start of the construction in early March. It's interesting to see all the stuff as you walk through the public safety building and everything is taken down, everybody's getting ready to move out and in the process of moving out. The final drawings needed for permitting have been submitted and the contractor is out for final pricing with their subcontractors and the staff expects final pricing on the whole project to be available by the end of the month. And the plan is to bring those numbers to council and then to have the final phase of that contract, which would be for the actual construction process and which is slated to begin in March. And also, we have a representative that's going to represent, hence the title, the city during the construction project will help us... during the construction project will help us out, somebody who is in the know and they were, they were present at the kickoff in the December, at the December meeting and staff has weekly meetings with the design build team and the representative over the project. So it takes, it takes some of the weight off of us and puts it on somebody else who will be there consistently to overlook the project. We had discussion of timelines council related to the existing Title Wave Water Sports lease. That in itself, the administrator gave a long and detailed information on what the lease was about, how, when it was written, how it's been altered, where it's at now. And very in-depth pages of information on that. And if anybody has any questions about that, it's available within, within that report. We had discussion of the extension of the dock lease by Title Wave. A lot of that's gonna be guided by, the next topic is basically what we have is our visioning program or visioning meeting that we have on the 30th. Not just that area, but basically for the entire marina and what, and what our citizens really want to see down there. We had review of our front beach and beach maintenance and marina 10-year capital plan. Again, they were distributed to the members for them to look at, kind of go over, and we'll be discussing that going through our budget process. There was no miscellaneous business and our next meeting is Wednesday, February 5th at 5:00 PM. And I'm not sure if any of the other members of the committee want to add anything to that, but.
I just think it's worth noting, I think we're going to continue to have these meetings in the evenings rather than as we have in the past in the mornings. There was a time when we had an active restaurant and other members of the marina asking us to have morning meetings to accommodate their work schedules. But it seems we've sort of flipped that recently and people prefer to have them where there's public input at night.
Any other questions on this? Yes, sir.
Just, just one question. Are we thinking, are we, we're gonna have one visioning meeting on the 30th and that's gonna be it in addition to what we have online and in our previous 2018 visioning meeting? Or are we gonna have more?
I'm gonna let Desiree answer. We've got a maximum number of 96 seats. And Desiree, take it away.
Sure. Well, it's up to you all. You direct me to put together the meetings that you all want. We are limited by, by fire code for, for the meeting on Thursday. We always have. We know that these meetings are, you know, very, you know, can be very popular. In order to be consistent with the messaging and the information that we're gathering from the community, we've also have an online forum. They're answering the same questions that are gonna be answered through the forum. So, you know, people should not think that if they don't attend on Thursday, then their opportunity to provide feedback on their vision for the community, for the Isle of Palms Marina, they've missed it. It, you know, it really depends how much feedback you all want. We have had really good turnout by, through the online forum. I think people have been taking their time responding to those questions and I think that it's a lot of information that'll be very helpful to guide your decision-making from, you know, in the next few months about the future of the marina. The city held numerous public meetings back in 2016, 2017, developed this comprehensive master plan that was presented to the community through a referendum, although the referendum failed. I think that all of that input is very valuable. And as you have seen from the recent feedback that you have, that you've been receiving, it's very similar. So I think there, there has to come a point where, you know, council feels that they have a good pulse on, you know, what the community, what the community wants and wishes and it's up to you all to look at what's, what's viable, just looking at the financials and looking at all of those details. So we're, we're happy to put as many community meetings as possible. However, you know, folks can reach out to me and can reach out to council via email and can, can definitely make their wishes known. So, so as much as we enjoy these meetings together, they are a lot of war. You know, it's not only me, but you know, we have everybody who's on staff basically involved in this whole process, so just keep that in mind. And this is not the only project that we're working on. So again, it's really up to you all, but we're trying to make it as widespread as possible so folks can, can send their comments.
Is there a campout option available?
Right.
To piggyback, go ahead, Ryan.
No, I'm just, I'm gonna say, I think, just reflective of what, of the, the same visioning meeting that we did in 2018, we were able to capture a lot of information out of that. And it really directed the council on which way to go after that collection. And we really focused, because we've been working on drainage for a long time, but we really opened our drainage infrastructure and we're putting a lot more money into that. We're putting a lot more money into different things that were directed by those top few items within that meeting. And I feel this, you know, this, this hopefully will, you know, gather some of a lot of that same information that we can move forward on.
Anyone else? And just to piggyback on what you said and what Ryan said, I think we're being very transparent in this whole process. We've really tried to get the public's involvement both on line and on this vision session on Thursday. So please come, have your friends come. This is about you. You are our bosses. So again, just be involved. Anything else on your committee?
No, that ends my report.
Okay. Moving on. Reports from city officers, boards and commissions. Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee, no meeting in January. Board of Zoning Appeals, the minutes are attached. And y'all can go online and find these. Planning Commission, minutes are attached, but we're gonna have a presentation by Douglas Currie to help us on a short-term rental comments from the planning commission.
Thank you, Mayor. As you all will recall, the city council tasked the planning commission back in the summer with, with looking at the issues around short-term rentals. Really, the, the task probably dealt more with establishing areas whereby short-term rentals would not be allowed on the back of the island. But the planning commission took the assignment and really in kind of looking at it, it was a good time to collect data, to analyze data, to try to identify any trends that may have, that may have come up. The planning commission has historically done that every several years. So, you know, they kind of check in on, on, on what's going on in terms of what's being built newly, you know, is, is everything that's getting built becoming a short-term rental? Looking at the size of houses, are people building large structures solely to rent, which there was a time where that was a trend? Also looking at the numbers, you know, has the number of short-term rentals sharply increased? There also is a lot of, you know, the Isle of Palms was really one of the first communities to truly regulate these short-term rentals. Since that time, it, almost every other community, if not every other community, has now kind of gotten into the, gotten into the game of regulating those. So the planning commission took examples of what everybody else was doing. I mean, there's a lot of, there are a lot of different ways and approaches that municipalities are looking at and implementing to try to deal with these. So planning commission thought that maybe they would take a look at those to see what, what other folks are doing. Also took the opportunity to look at complaint data and violation data. You know, has there been a sharp increase in the number of complaints? They met with the livability officer who was, who's been handling these complaints most recently, as well as they met with the police chief to just talk globally kind of about what, what they're seeing and what their feeling, feelings were on the, on the short-term rentals. So it was a really wide gamut of things that they looked at and they, they kind of started the process by identifying everything that they may want to consider. They looked at, they, they did look at establishing a maximum number of short-term rentals. They looked at establishing lines, zoning demarcations where you couldn't do short-term rentals. They looked at regulating the length of a stay, you know, the idea being that somebody that shows up just for a night may cause more problems than somebody who's staying for a week. And they looked at the possibility of even reducing occupancy when a building sells. So they, they did look at a lot of things. Again, they, they met with the police department. They also met with those that are in the short-term rental industry on the island, the managers and some of the owners on the island. And after a pretty thorough process, they've come back with, with some recommendations. I would say that really none of the trends, while, while things, you know, are always in a state of flux in terms of the, the number of complaints, the number of tickets, the trends were not alarming in, in any direction. I mean, there didn't seem to be a sharp increase in the number of rentals. There was not a sharp increase in the size of rentals, of what's being built for rental purposes. The number of complaints, there wasn't a sharp increase in that. So by and by, I think the planning commission felt like things were generally today, very similar to the way they were at each mile point, milestone that they've checked. So that was, I think they felt like that was good news, that things weren't kind of spiraling in one, one direction or another. So they, there, there are, you're gonna receive a number of recommendations. I will just review kind of what I think are the top four in terms of importance. And the first is adopting a, a policy whereby a rental, short-term rental would lose their ability to rent or go through the license revocation process if that rental has five founded complaints in a, in a calendar year. Currently, we have an informal policy where if you get three guilty charges by a judge, that would trigger a revocation process. But we've only hit that, we've only hit that trigger once or twice in, in 15 years. So, and, and according to the, the police chief, there's a reason because it's very, it's very tough to actually get five convictions in the court, so.
When you say founded, is, what does that definition?
So, so that means it is a, so that means that an officer shows up and they, there is indeed a violation of a code occurring. So not necessarily, that happens and they don't always issue a ticket. So that was one of the things that, that the planning commission was seeing was that they would show up and it was a founded complaint, but there was not a ticket issued or there would be a ticket issued and it would be dismissed down the road. So I think the planning commission felt like, so they wanted to increase the number because they knew that the trigger was being, that it was an easier trigger to hit, a founded complaint versus a guilty charge at, at the court, but they wanted to increase the number from three to five.
That could be for a range of different, like the severity of the complaints.
So it would be, it would be, it would be all of them. I mean, it would be overcrowding, a noise violation, too many cars at the, at the house. So it could be anything that is a, that is in our code, if it's being violated, that could potentially be a complaint that's founded.
Does it, if I may, just for clarity, I mean, we get complaints because there's children playing in a swimming pool. That's not founded. Right, so when we looked at this last year, we had lengthy conversation around the number of truly unfounded complaints. Some of them very consistent from the same people complaining, but the idea was to get our arms wrapped around what, what is a real legitimate complaint and not just more or less a minor nuisance complaint.
Right. So that's the first one. Going five founded complaints, you'd start the revocation process, which would get that license holder in front of you all for consideration of revoking the license. So you all would get the, you'd get the records, you'd see the, and that's, that's the way that process would be handled. Go ahead.
I know that there's a one on here for improving the record keeping, but do you have any idea of, or does planning commission have any idea of the impact that that change would have from three, from three convictions to five founded? Like you said, one or two in the last 15 years?
There, there would not have been anybody in the last couple of years that would have lost their licenses. But I think prior years, there were some problematic rentals that probably would, that would have met that trigger. According to the, according to the officers, you know, it has been, basically, they've been able to kind of get the real problem rentals under control in, in the last few years, which is a, you know, it's a good thing and what a community strives for is ultimately compliance and not punishment. So they've, they by and large felt good about the state of rentals currently. And there were some, there were some big problems that came out. I mean, large events and people being arrested and, but they were, they were somewhat isolated and it would be unique, you know, to, to once a season type thing at these houses.
Sorry, one more?
Yes, go ahead.
As a follow-up, so the, the example you brought up or that I'm assuming you're bringing up of a big house party, if there's multiple violations, is it by instance or by a number of violations?
It would be per day. So in other words, you could not, if you had a, if, if they showed up and it was, and they went around and they found five different things, that, that would be counted as one incident.
That was my question.
Okay.
That was my question.
Okay. So secondly, the, currently the code has a, it is pretty tight on overnight occupancy and that's the one that's, you know, you hear that it's a, it's how many bedrooms, you get two per bedroom plus two people. But there is a, and that, so, so really the overnight occupancy is driven by the size and the number of bedrooms of the rental. However, currently there is a flat daytime occupancy, we call it, of 40 people. So theoretically, 40 people could be at a sea cabin, a one-bedroom place, having a party, and that wouldn't violate anything in the city's code. And this actually is a recommendation that came from the rental management community of making the daytime occupancy also hinging on the size of the unit. So the recommendation there is to have the daytime occupancy be two times the overnight occupancy. So if you're a two, or a two-bedroom, you would be six people at night and 12 people during the day. So, you know, that was, that was an attempt to get, to get your arms around the raucous parties. Because right now, 40, you know, 40 people is a, is a pretty sizable gathering, especially if it's at a smaller house. And, but they also didn't want to increase it for bigger houses to going above 40. So it's 40 or two times the, the overnight occupancy, whichever is less. So that's the second suggestion. The third suggestion is a requirement that would mandate that every rental would be able to have an owner's representative onsite within one hour of being called. And this is really coming from the police department where if they show up and there is not somebody representing the owner, they have, that causes them enforcement problems in clearing the house, getting things dealt with while they're on the scene. And they, they had an instance where that was a problem. They, they literally couldn't clear the house because they, the owner was out of town, actually out of the country. So they kind of had this rolling event through the night that they, they could not legally clear the event.
Doug, just point of clarity, is that physical presence or?
Physically, yes. Physically present within an hour. And I'll just say that the planning commission went between 30 minutes and an hour. The, the thought was is that 30 minutes may just be too limiting and that, you know, the police department said realistically, if somebody was on the way, they would go tend to other matters and then come back either way. So they felt like an hour was reasonable.
Is that an industry standard?
No.
An expectation for?
No, this is, I mean, this is one of these things that really we're putting in by our own experiences of what's necessary.
Well, the Folly Beach Ordinance in Mount Pleasant in Kiowa, Doug, they all include a similar provision.
Okay.
Douglas, we all read in the paper just recently where there was an Airbnb party on Isle of Palms and I really didn't know about it until I read about it in the paper.
You weren't there.
I wasn't there either.
So he says.
My story, I'm sticking to it. So I mean, that's a situation where you have an out-of-town or out-of-state owner renting a property and there's no way somebody can be there. So this is trying to eliminate that type of problem.
Yeah, it would, it would almost require that, that owners that are out of the state or out of the area have a local. area have a local representative of some, I mean, it could be a neighbor, it could be just about, it could be a professional manager, it wouldn't have to be, but we have people that have zero presence in this area or really anywhere near, and that's causing problems.
Okay. Sorry, Douglas.
Go ahead.
Wait till you start the next one.
Okay, yeah, then you got to.
Is there any language, and I'm sorry, I didn't, I don't recall seeing it, around how we define an owner's representative?
It is somewhat generic, and there was some wordsmithing that went on at the planning commission to not make it have to be a professional. And I think it is just a, an owner's agent or an owner's representative. But specifically, the planning commission didn't want to require that it be a professional manager. There was some thought given to that. I mean, I think the planning commission looked at, tried to identify whether or not there was kind of the sense that maybe a professionally managed rental has less problems, but they couldn't really vet that out of the data. So they decided not to require that it be professionally managed. And that actually hits on, the last one is really, there is a series of recommendations about just improving data, and that's just kind of a, there won't be a code change that comes with that, but that will be, you know, the comments were made that the Public Safety Committee used to get pretty detailed data on the number of complaints where they were and kind of short-term rental report at their monthly meetings. Also, we have this software, we have this host compliance software that's in the process of being implemented now that should be giving us better data on, you know, the size of rentals, the frequency of rentals, and so we think that we're going to be in a position of even better analysis of these short-term rentals going forward.
Any other questions for Douglas?
I just would like to know the degree to which you've involved the rental community, the realty community in discussing these ideas.
So they, I will say that they, towards the end of the process, you know, the planning commission was kind of all over the board, but towards the end, there was a consistent presence at all of their meetings by these managers, and I think that it was a collaborative effort to come up with these. I think that, I would be surprised if the rental, if the management companies come out in objection to these recommendations.
Makes it easier.
Douglas, real quickly, a few years ago, we see a lot of new houses going up nowadays. A few years ago, we limited any new rental house coming on the market, whether it's 5,000 square feet, 6,000 square feet, the maximum number that can be occupied for a rental is 12, correct?
Yeah, just to clarify that, because it does create confusions and you get this deep algorithm for figuring out what the occupancy of a rental is. People gravitate towards the maximum of 12 people. But just for clarity, that is the maximum occupancy of a newly constructed house. So any brand-new house can't rent it to more than 12 people, but an old, larger house, and it's a graduated program where if it was on the rental program, when that ordinance was enacted, they were grandfathered in, if it was a large house that existed but did not have a rental license, that was a different calculation, but any brand-new construction would forever be limited to 12 people.
As of what date, Douglas? I think you knew I was going to ask that.
Yeah.
Come back later.
Several years ago. Maybe.
Over 10 years ago.
Yeah, I'm thinking 2010, I could be right.
I'm just thinking about the confusion of somebody potentially purchasing a home. That would.
Yeah, I think the real estate, real estate industry is very plugged into that, and they call, they get that, because it's, I mean, it can be tricky for us to figure out.
But it doesn't solve a lot of problems.
Yes. The idea that, you know, these new mega mansions were being built solely for the purposes of renting them in the future has gone away. I can tell you from looking at the plans, you don't see these houses just chock full of 14 bedrooms. It's all large bedrooms, not to be filled in.
Any other questions, Gabs?
Just curious, where do the 40, number 40, how'd that come up?
So that's already, the daytime occupancy is already set at 40.
But how do we determine 40, not 30?
Back then?
50?
So it actually was 50. And one of these kind of spot checks, 50 was too much, so it went to 40.
Scientific.
Very scientific. 50 was too much, obviously. 30 is not enough.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Douglas.
Okay, moving on. Reports from special or joint committees, none? Fetitions received, referred or disposed of, none? Bills already in possession? Second reading of ordinance 201916 and ordinance amending Title VI, Health and Sanitation, Chapter I, General Provisions, Article B, nuisances and ordinance to establish new standards for dilapidated structures. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
I will, this is legacy from real property, well, actually from public safety. Moved to public safety and was, it was because we had a handful of properties on the island that were not being maintained, and this was hugely controversial in terms of how do you enact something that achieves its goal without overreaching and accusing us of moving in a direction of a homeowners association. I think, and I'm going to ask for Desiree and Douglas, he thinks he gets to sit down now, but probably not, the large discussion around this was, every ordinance that we have, we don't enforce 100%, frankly. Those ordinances are there for those occasions that we have a huge issue. I liken it to drinking a beer on the beach. Chief, I did not say that. Those ordinances are broadly enforced when we have a problem. All right, so this one was discussed, you know, if your house has mold on it or something that's not 100% up to code and standard, then therefore, we're going to run around the island and give everybody a ticket and a citation for that, and that was not the intent. There is no simple answer to this ordinance, yea or nay. It just doesn't exist. And we kicked this around in real property last year over and over again. We had citizens input where they were not happy with some of the neighbors. And Douglas, for the benefit of the new council members, it's probably worth stating your concerns. See, I just knew, I wanted to call him back up here. Yeah.
Or we started from the beginning?
No, but I think you were very open about enforceability and what it means.
Well.
Well, Douglas, if you may, if you, I think it would be helpful to first address what the current ordinance of our city to view in dealing with some of this dilapidated, you know, these structures.
All right, I knew we were going back to the beginning.
I wasn't trying to bring it to the beginning.
To be on the record and their new members, and then what this ordinance would challenge.
Yeah, so currently, the city's codes and policies are very much focused on the safety of the site. So really, if we have a building that's in great disrepair, it's abandoned, it's dilapidated, the building department and the public safety department, the police department will both go out and look at it. From the building department's perspective, it has to be secured. So you can't have, and it's what we call an attractive nuisance. You can't have an attractive nuisance that teenagers would be tempted by, you know, with wide-open doors that you could go into. So we will require that it be shut, either by plywood or locks or, you know, whatever method it takes to really secure it. So that's a measure we take. And if there is a pool, we ensure that the pool is safely guarded, which would be a fence around it that's latched and, you know, a kid can't just get to the pool. And we will, and the police department will ensure that the vegetation is not unsafe. It doesn't get to a height that's, you know, a rodent would be attractive to rodents. So beyond that, you know, it would really have to be in a state of falling down. The only time we've really forced somebody to remove something is when it's in danger of physically falling over and hurting somebody. So that's our current policy. And so if you see a house, it's vacant, it looks like a haunted house, and nobody lives in it, unless it's open or going to fall over or completely overgrown to the point where it would be a rodent farm, it probably complies with our current code. So this, what we've done, and this is in reaction to people coming to the real property and then public safety, we have borrowed bits and pieces of what's called the International Property Maintenance Code, and we've applied them to vacant houses as well as occupied houses. And I know you've looked through the provisions there, but just to highlight a few, it would require that you have your pool pumps on and filtering the water, you can't have a green, you can't have a green pool. It would require that things, that things be structurally attached, you know, sometimes you see railings that are either falling off or could be kind of easily detached, those would have to be firmly attached. Gets into things, excessive mildew, you know, the word in there is excessive, that's obviously in the eye of the beholder, but, you know, we wouldn't think that just a little bit of mildew was excessive, it would have to be considerable mildew. So that's really what it is. It would be a step farther than what we currently are, what we currently manage. I don't think, and I think it's been said, I think we have probably less than 10 houses out here now that would be impacted by it. I will say that, you know, from a decision-making standpoint, when enforcement, when it comes time to enforce, and this happens with almost anything that you enforce, is immediately the finger-pointing begins about, we'll look at that house. So I wouldn't enact this with the idea that it's not going to be enforced. So even if we're not actively looking for it, you know, we're not going to go out and drive around, but once we start enforcing on it, it's going to create the, we'll look there, look there, and that's just the nature of enforcement. So I would not, if you have hesitation about it being enforced island-wide, then you need to consider that, because I think that it probably will have to be administered island-wide. You know, obviously, we wouldn't be unreasonable in the administration of it, but I do expect that it would be administered island-wide.
Questions?
I got some.
Yes, sir.
When you say less than 10 homes on the island now that fall under this, are they, are any of them occupied or are they unoccupied?
I think they're all, I believe they are all unoccupied.
Okay.
There are a couple that are occasionally occupied. Not sure about that, that people, apparently, people show up and stay in occasionally by the owners, I'm not, you know, it's not nefarious activity.
And I struggle with the word excessive. You know, we've had some discussion, I know Kevin and I had some discussion earlier too, when you start talking about mildew, and let's face it, there's mildew in most homes I hear to some degree.
Right.
You know, unless you have your semi-annual cleaning. So how do you better define that?
I don't know that you're ever going to be able to come up with a square footage to measure what mildew is. I would say that I, I think that if an enforcement officer showed up and the only thing was mildew, that it probably would go unenforced. But if you are into an enforcement action with the city, I'm guessing that that's going to be added to the list of things to do.
Okay.
It's my best kind of guess about the mildew.
Also, there's no language in here about outbuildings or pertinent structures that, you know, around the home?
I think it says any structure. Well, I think it's generically occupied or unoccupied structures.
Okay. So it'll fall under, I guess, storage areas or something like that? Okay.
Mr. Potts?
Doug, councilor's reading?
I'm through, go ahead.
I didn't notice any exceptions. What happens, foreclosures?
Yeah, that's.
Turmo storms.
There is one in there for.
Talk about the mayor's house.
There is one in there for declared state of emergency. That was one that, you know, the example routinely was brought up about Hugo. What happens after a hurricane hits and your house is torn up and you have exposed wood, you have, so that exception is in there, but that's pretty much it. So an issue like a foreclosure, and I've told people this, that right now, there's probably 10 or so. There was a time 10 years ago or so that there was maybe 100. And they were very challenging, I mean, we did struggle with just what we do already under the code of getting them boarded up, keeping the grass somewhat cut. So while we can handle this now, while it's 10 houses or thereabouts, I think in a time of a, you know, where foreclosures become rampant, it might get to a point that we would not be able to, our staff couldn't keep up with it.
And just to follow up, as we talked earlier, a lot of these items, nine through 21, address structural members, footings, anchors, stuff that are covered up and you can't see. Then we have a lot of old J.C. Long homes, we have a lot of non-J.C. Long homes that are older, sort of the old look of the island. How do we reconcile that? If somebody's not anchored right, is that obviously going to be a violation and could be fined?
Well, again, I think that these things would be looked at cumulatively if you have, and I think that we're not going to, we're obviously not going to go start trying to yank up footings to make a judgment as to whether or not they are adequate, but in the event that something has heaved over or crumbling or clearly and obviously diminished, that's when I think that would come into play. Same thing with, you know, when we go to these houses, before we will go too far, we'll be on a deck and you just kind of want to do a pressure test of, is it going to fall through or is it not? So I think that it would be, all of these things, talking about the structural integrity, would have to be pretty, they would have to be bad. I mean, they would have to be failing to a point where somebody is going to be hurt or fall through the floor and not, you know, just.
You might have just answered my next question about reach their limited state. I was kind of made a note, define limited state.
And again, I think if it's a deck intended to hold a human and a human's about to go through it, I think that's at the end of its state. If it's a roof rafter and it's intended to hold up a roof, but you can tell it's about to collapse, that's at the end of its state. So basically, under, at a point at which it's about to give way, that would be at its limit.
Douglas, didn't you just mention earlier, something like that would fall under our current ordinance, wouldn't it? I mean, basically.
If it's going to fall over, not with, yes, if it's going to fall over on you, that's already, we would already say, but this is talking about a banister that you can go up and you could, you know, rattle it free, that would be at the limits of its state, but it's not going to, a banister is not going to fall over and kill somebody.
Correct.
So we're taking it one step further.
And one of the things that, like you said, a lot of it had to do with, some of these things was with the appearance of the homes and what have you, and if you find something esophagus open, somebody can just go and put a piece of plywood up. It doesn't necessarily, it solves the problem of the ordinance that could be a violation, but it's still going to be a nuisance, not even a nuisance, nuisance to their neighbors, but not in the eyes of the law.
That's correct.
They could go through and paint different sections of it, whether they want to do something, while it's not in violation of the law. So I can understand where this, it could be hard to enforce because they can continue just to bandage.
Yes.
Everything continuously. One of the other things I have is, it continues to talk about, one of the biggest things with the algae is.
The algae, you said?
Yeah, yeah. On the outside of the building, and what's going to determine that? Whether a building is plumb or level and, like I said, I mentioned this before, I said, you can put a marble in the middle of my house, it ends up in the back bedroom by the time it's done rolling. And that's just the nature of the J.C. Long home. Are city buildings exempt from this law, Douglas?
No.
Because I know, because it's funny. Because I know, I mean, because I, I, it's funny, because I normally do this when laws come up like this, but.
You found rot.
We have rot in the railings.
As you.
We have rot in the railings. We have, we have open soffits. We have rusty, um.
We have four quarters for that.
Okay. So, but it just, I mean.
We're going to tell Robert.
This law passes when we are.
Where's Robert?
You don't have, you don't have to go far to start writing tickets. It's just you have to go out your back door, so.
I just think it's worth noting, too, that Douglas has a finite amount of time and I think a growing number of responsibilities. For example, we've talked in public works about how he is, he and his department are spending a lot more time on the front end when people are coming to them with plans for a new house, to make sure that those have low impact on their neighbors, among many, many other things. So I, do you envision that you and your current staffing have time to handle this?
So as I've said, I think while the number is currently small, we could. It, it will be, I can tell you, you know, at the end of the road, there's, some of these houses just can't be brought up to, can't be brought up to a standard. So probably at the end of that road is an order for demolition, which is a pretty severe, you know, it's going to take significant time to get a house to a point where it would be ordered to demolish. So while the number is low, again, I think we could, we could manage it. If, if things were to get worse, we probably could not manage it.
Simple question, and, and having had the history of watching this for well over a year, some of the problems that, that were brought to council are in the process of being rectified. Do we have a problem today? The same problem that when we started this, you've been through so many iterations of this, and we've sat through many, many committee meetings on this, and you've amended this and changed this probably no less than five times.
Yeah.
Do we have the problem today that we had when we started this?
The problem is slightly less than it was a year ago. There's, you know, there, there has been some.
Always going to be a few.
And I will be, and I think I've said this, too, that the problem that was, the problem that was brought forward to the committees, I don't know if this ordinance will really ever solve it, because it gets kind of back to what Councilman Buchanan was saying. You could have a multicolored house, which we have one, that has a quarter of it sprayed a different color, and it, and it does not look good, but it also doesn't violate this code.
Well, we can't legislate neighborly relations.
Exactly. And, and it gets very hard to regulate, you know, without a full-fledged Board of Architecture Review, it's, it is very hard to judge and regulate aesthetics.
Councilmember Moore?
Yeah, I was maybe just going to reiterate some of those, the points from Councilman Buchanan, because as I read, read this and I think about some of the specific troubled houses that have been presented by, by neighbors, it doesn't, what's the extent do you feel like this, the new language can help us address, can help you enforce and help the city address those issues?
In the specific problems that we are dealing with?
Specific ones.
You know, clearly we have green pools and that's, anybody that looks at it says that's gross, this would, this would kind of in black and white help that situation. Now granted, the pool is behind a privacy fence, it's locked, technically nobody shouldn't, and really practically, nobody can get to the pool anyway, but it, you know, if, if I had a bedroom looking over that fence, I probably wouldn't like the appearance of it, and it will fix that. Also, we, we do have, you know, things like banisters that are just laying on the ground, siding laying on the ground, rot, you know, full, full sides of siding with rotten.
But the banister's lying on the ground, that's actually okay, right? Because it's not part of the structure anymore?
Well, it shouldn't be part of the structure. So I think it would, I think it would deal with, with a few issues, but as I've said, I don't.
It doesn't include the Band-Aids.
Yeah, it would be, it would be a lot of Band-Aids and probably still not look great.
My last comment, first comment. I'm the elephant in the room. I begged him to make me take my house down. Unfortunately, I don't qualify for that, but I would love for the city to make my house. My house is a termite-eating house, been in litigation for five years, but I keep it locked up, secured, pool clean, yard clean, but in reality, we really probably have less than five houses that people have complained about. And when they say something, Douglas sends a letter out and they go out and do the minimum to keep them out of the hot water.
Right.
Is that probably pretty fair?
Yeah, your situation would be, you know, and I, I don't know how that would happen. If, just kind of playing it forward, if this law was enacted, when your house got to the point it got to, where it's in, this ordinance would not have allowed that, so, you know, and so points, you were talking about exemptions of litigation, your attorney is advising you to leave, leave it up for whatever reason, this ordinance is not going to exempt that, so it's, it would go, you know, it wouldn't give you that opportunity that I guess your lawyer is advising you to do, to give you the best, to give you the best.
And then the last point, of course, you've already said it, is once you go down this path, it's going to open it up for anybody to start pointing fingers. So is there any other discussion?
Yes, sir.
If, if we have to keep pools clean, can we keep the ditch clean behind my house, too?
Call it a pool.
Because that thing stinks.
Are you using it as a pool?
My dog's.
Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of the second reading of ordinance 2019?
Yeah, there is.
Do we have a motion to?
He already had it. He already got it.
Yep.
Let's confirm.
Yes, there was.
Yes.
Mr. Powell, Mr. Powell.
Okay, okay.
There was a motion, a second, a lot of discussion. All those in favor of this second reading passing signify by saying aye. All those against signify by saying nay.
Nay.
I think that's unanimous.
Douglas is wiping the sweat.
Thank you, Douglas.
Thank you, Douglas. You've done a lot of hard work on this.
Thanks, Douglas.
Introduction of new bill's resolution proclamation, approval of a safety resolution 2020. Excuse me while I read this, but do I have to read this? Yes.
You can wait the reading.
Do I hear a motion to wait the reading?
So moved.
All those, discussion, hearing none? And this is the first part. Iowpalm realizes that it has a responsibility to provide a safe work environment for its employees and that each pursues the highest standards of his or her assigned activities. All municipal employees must recognize that the well-being of the persons involved in the protection of our physical resources are as important as the activity and work being performed. And we had a motion and a second. Any, any discussion?
I thought it was a motion to stop reading.
Motion to approve.
You had a motion to approve and wait the reading.
Wait the reading. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Okay.
It was unanimous.
It was a motion to approve and wait the reading.
Correct.
Approve and wait. Got it.
Okay, moving on. Miss Alena's business, none. Next meeting, 6:00 PM Tuesday, February 25th. And do I hear a motion to go into executive session pursuant to section 30-4-70A2 to receive legal advice and status update on legal options for the city related to the lease of Morgan Creek Grill?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming tonight. Okay, we are coming out of executive session concerning updating on legal options for the city and the lease with Morgan Creek Grill. No decisions have been made and.
Motion to adjourn.
I hear a motion, I hear a second, go here, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Are you like?
He's on.
You.